Call this meeting in order. Please rise for a presentation of colors.
Go guard front center. Fall guard, close the covers. Will you now please join me in the Florida regions? Is it armed?
At Florida regions. To the fight of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you now please join me in the scout of law? Trixel, trixel signs.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country. To obey the scout law. To help other people at all times. Keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
Fall guard, this minute.
Okay.
You want to go and get down before we introduce him?
Okay.
Sure? Oh, she's going to do it.
All right, introduction of our boy scouts.
Please bring Griggs in first.
What's that?
Bring Griggs in first.
Bring Griggs in first.
Oh, bring Griggs in first, I got you. Uh, Jason Timmons.
Good idea. Yes.
You're gonna sit right behind him, young man, so you'll all, you'll have to go down that way. Colin Grable. Tanner Dinger. Right over there. You're gonna sit right on the side. Kyle White. Right over there. I feel like this is graduation.
Hey, yeah, Mike. Dick Samples, why don't you sit down right there.
Sean, uh, help me out here, how do I pronounce your last name? What's that?
Moglets.
Moglets. Did I get close either way? All right, you're gonna sit right behind this young man with the, uh, boy scout outfit.
Get to be with Sharon.
And then Zach Jennings.
He wanted to sit here, okay.
No, no, he's gonna sit right here, right in center, and I'm gonna whisper in his ear.
Oh, you need that one's about four or five.
Right in here, right up in here.
Do you wanna scoot a little, Sharon?
Yeah, here, scoot up.
Do you wanna scoot?
Water?
And that way you can get in.
No, agendas.
Oh, agendas.
Yeah, we need some additional.
There you go.
Get right on up in here.
You're gonna make all the, you're gonna say yes for him or no for him. His name is John Gottschall. So every time they call John Gottschall. That's you.
All right, you guys relax, get on up there, we're not gonna bite you.
We'll help you.
We are right here, so we need to ask for a motion, so it's gonna be a agenda.
Cause he always does it as a agenda. We'll help you along, this is the agenda.
Just want an extra.
Yeah, please, thank you. If you wanna set it up. You know how if you want to. Yeah, I can't. That would be mad. Oh, good. You can help me if I fall off again?
I don't think you have replacement faults.
Motion to approve the gin.
Please move that.
You can say.
Speak up, son.
So moved.
Oh, he said.
Can I get a second? Second?
We bash them, we just hold it up.
Who was the first? Megan, we got it down here in the second.
Who was the first?
First was that.
Right here.
Right here?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Comments from the floor?
Corey Winters, and Bob Davenport.
Hello, thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us. I'm Corey Winters, I'm the branch manager of the First National Bank of, um, Arnsville here in South Jacksonville. And then I've got, uh, Barb Davenport here with me. So we just wanted to, um, come in and let you guys know, we, uh, saw that you were entertaining the idea of, uh, moving some accounts. So we were, um, kinda come just to show our support, we've had a great relationship with you guys over the years. Um, we submitted a proposal earlier today, so a little late to the, to the table on that one, but, um, wanted to just see, you know, if you guys would entertain, um, tabling that motion tonight till next month, so that way you have a chance to look at that proposal and, uh, you know, see if you have any questions for us on it. Or if you wanna say anything.
I'm Barb Davenport, um, I've been employed at the First National Bank of Arnsville for ten years, I've been at the south main branch in South Jacksonville for the past eight years as scout supervisor. We've had a wonderful relationship with the village all these years, um, appreciate all the business that you've brought to us, um, made some friends with everyone along the way, it's been very nice. I would like to, as Corey said, um, if you could entertain the idea of retaining the account that you're considering to move, we'd like to, if you would entertain the idea of, um, keeping it with us, um, has a good relationship. Kai Schnicker made a proposal which is given copy to Mr. Samples and to, um, Tiffany. If you have any questions on it, please feel free to ask us or talk to Kai, but, um, we'd just like the opportunity to keep that business relationship going as we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. What we'll do is when we get to that item, we'll, we'll leave it on there for now, but once we get down there, we'll.
Definitely.
That's number one, right, Harry?
What's that?
That's number one, the action item.
Yes, yes.
I need a motion for session minutes of January 3rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Is there any correspondent? No.
Are there any extra?
Yeah, he had more in here. There you go.
Motion approved treasures report, December 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Is that a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I tell you what, I'm gonna read that for you, just because that's. Unless you really want to. I, I don't even like doing this. General fund checks for January 2000, January 2019, an amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total TIF checks for this month, eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent. Total motor field tax checks, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Total tourism checks, sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and one cent. Checks on water sewer revenue, twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Total water and sewer deposit refund checks, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Manual checks issued January 2019, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. January payables, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion to approve January 2019 payables.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We have the annual report for, for, report for 2018. Does anybody, uh, if anybody's had a chance to order that, anybody have any questions or?
Very fine job. Good job.
It looks, it looks pretty good, I like it.
Those are good.
It looks good.
Very impressive.
Anybody from the audience wants to look through these, they're, uh, leave. Well, actually, you know what, I'm gonna go send it right over there, cause they also look at it.
Tiffany.
This was my first one, I found it very interesting to see.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover a couple of those, just because they're, uh, I don't want you to get lost on here, so we'll guess the names. We have, we have two resignations this month from the fire department. One of them is Kirk Poots, which is a retirement, and Mike Brodas, just, again, Mike Brodas is just from the fire department. He's not retiring from the police department, so. To approve, uh, Kirk Poots and Mike Brodas resignation from the fire department. So move? A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Bill, uh, appointments of the fire department officers, you guys wanna do all those at once or? Yeah. Uh, the first assistant would be Brian Glasscock, second assistant David Bye, and the secretary Robert Braymire. These are for, two, they're two years, right? Is that what we decided?
One's for one, and two are for two.
Two year, but the first, first year is gonna do one, if that.
Yeah.
That way they rotate.
So they get, right.
So what we'll do.
Say that again, first, first assistant?
First assistant is Brian Glasscock, second assistant is David Bye, and the secretary is Robert Braymire? Am I pronouncing it right? And what we're gonna do is those will normally be, uh, a two-year term, but being this is the first year, so that way they flip-flop, they're not all three gone at the same time. The, uh, first assistant and the secretary will be a one-year term, and then the, uh, the second assistant will be a two-year term, that way in one year, those will still be a two-year term, and that way they'll flip-flop. Does that make sense?
I think it's the other way around in the ordinance.
Is it the other way?
That's what I thought too, actually.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, first assistant's two years.
I thought there was only one of them that were one year.
No, they're all, they're all two years.
Right, but I thought.
But the initial one needs to be one year, so that, it doesn't matter to me which way it is, that's fine.
Whatever it is in the ordinance.
Yeah.
I, I think it's second, or first assistant's two-year term.
So first assistant and the secretary's two years.
If we do the other, that's fine, doesn't matter as long, cause they're gonna, I mean, in one year, they're gonna be the same people anyway, so it doesn't matter, I assume unless these guys are going anywhere. So that way they just rotate. So we'll do David Bye, the, the second assistant for a one-year term initially, and then after that, they'll all be two years. So motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second?
Somebody's on the phone. All in favor, say aye. Let's go and do it. Roll call for that. Hold on.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall? John Gottschall? Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Frank Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Total permit, two buildings, estimate cost seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Permit fee, twenty dollars.
And then we need to schedule a meeting to review closed session minutes, and at the same time we do for our codification meeting. So, anybody have a preference there, any, as long as it's not the fourteenth.
I can't do the twenty-eighth.
You can't do the twenty-eighth. So, uh, you guys wanna do the twenty-first?
Same time.
Six-thirty.
It'll be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
We'll start that meeting with a brief closed session, and what we'll do there is we'll review closed session minutes from the past year, and, uh, see if there's anything we're gonna approve. And then the, uh, codification part, we're gonna go over the water portion and the police portion. So, and those department heads are already working on those, so hopefully that's not gonna take too long. But if you guys want to, not if you guys want to, yeah, please do, uh, read those sections before we come in, you guys don't have to read them, but.
Police and water, is that what you said?
Uh, police and water?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tim and John. Cause we've already covered fire, fire and finance, so.
Okay, alright.
And then for committee reports, personnel, we've covered, uh, the current officers and talked about the resignations that were coming up, so that's all we have for that, and I'll let the rest of you guys go for planning public facilities.
Um, we talked about, uh, water main break, um, the Johns guys had already fixed. I don't have my notes in front of me, I don't remember exactly what we talked about. If anybody else remembers, off the top of their head. I mean, I, I know there was something else, but I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Public protection, John?
You got anything?
Tim's not here, so.
You got anything for public protection?
I don't have anything, and Tim didn't leave me nothing for tonight, and everything's pretty much down here.
Okay.
Chief, you got anything?
I just got what's on the act shot over here.
Why can't Tim be like that?
I figured I'd say some time, I mean, otherwise we'd be here after night.
Finance, we met and talked, we had a proposal from, uh, Perry State Bank about increasing the, uh, interest rate on the TIF fund, and I'm going to spoil things maybe a little bit, but we're going to table that, that's under the action item, to move those funds to Perry State Bank, we're going to table that tonight, because today, um, First National Bank of Arnsville came in and gave us a very good proposal on it, and we need to, we need to see what, what's the best for the village. That's all I have for finance.
Parks and tours.
Um, we had a grant application for, uh, the Bass Tournament out at the lake, so we're going to vote on it tonight.
Approval to move funds to PSB. Motion to table that.
Motion to table. Dick?
Don't shake your head, yeah.
Second?
Second, yes.
Paula Stewart?
Oh, no, you, we don't need a roll call for that.
You don't?
No. That's fine, not for you, just say.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motor fuel tax resolution, motion to pass.
So moved.
All right, we need to have a little discussion on that, cause I'm kinda lost.
Sure.
What, are we gonna?
The, uh, that's the one John talked about where, and Tiffany might be able to deal with that, so you should do, that's the one where the state's fiscal year ends a little different time than ours.
Okay, yeah, alright, we're, yeah, we're gonna be short on one end and long on the other because of the time period.
Correct, it's just because of the time period.
Yeah, yeah, that's why.
Yes. So. Motion's on David, so, uh, that's for.
I need roll call.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
TIF surplus ordinance, ordinance, motion to pass.
Just say it nice and loud.
So moved.
There you go.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yeah.
Motion to table ordinance to sell surplus property Chevy Impala.
Table on that, cause we didn't get the ordinance done since Tim's gone, so.
Is that an old police car or what?
Yeah, it's just one of the old police cars, so.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
I can't hear you. Second! Roll call, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, all in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion to pass resolution memo and jump of understanding reference fire fund, motion.
Uh, hold on a second, this is, I wanna read off the amount on here, is this, you know, if that's the most current amount, Tiffany, it's sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ten cents? As of February 4th, 2019?
Yes.
And for the public, what this is, is a memorandum of understanding, that's us passing this resolution as saying that we're gonna take that money and we're going to then write a check for that, which is gonna be a second action item, we can't do it the same night, so we'll probably do that at our next regular meeting, financially, I assume, with the, uh, the, um, I don't wanna say ordinances, with the, uh, not the budget, procreations. It won't be an issue, right?
I also want to have the check ready tonight, it's in the.
Oh, we, we don't, we don't have it on an action item for tonight, we're gonna do it as a separate motion.
Oh, this is, okay.
This is the, this is just the memo, the memorandum, the, the resolution saying this is going to be. That's fine, um, and then we'll have, it'll be the next regular meeting, yes, so, yeah, it'd be a separate action item, yes. So that way, that way, it's just that way everybody knows where the money's going before we actually do it. So this is just more of a, uh, a safeguard, so everybody, everybody's literally understanding.
I think it's just as a, just to tell the public, this is a, I don't remember random, this is a transparency act, because this money belonged to these guys everywhere, you take it from there, but.
Yeah, that's what, this is what the, uh, volunteer firefighters did fundraisers years ago, and then over the years ended up getting tied up with village funds, so what we're doing here is we're gonna take that, and we're gonna write, we the village, since it's, again, since it's tied up with village funds, we don't want it to be tied up with village funds. So, our law firm is help the, the fire department, the volunteer fire department guys, uh, create a new nonprofit entity, a 501(c)(3), if that matters for everybody. And then we're going to take that, we're gonna write a check for that amount, that's sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ten cents. Once that, those accounts are dissolved and closed, then we're gonna just write that check out to this new entity. So basically, it'd be like us making a donation to this new charity. So that way it's, the, I don't wanna say ties are cut, but that way it's no longer entangled with village funds and, and, uh, ten years down the road, no, no future board can try and take money out of that or whatever, so then their fundraiser money is their fundraiser money, and, uh, it's no longer in our audits, and it's just clean.
Yes, so personally, I wanna say thank you to everybody that worked on that, because this was something that came to my attention a year ago, maybe, Brian, and it was tangled up and nobody talked about it, and it was like, why are we not talking about it? If it's their money, give them their money. So, it was a lot of work, and thank you and congratulations, fire department, your money's back where, where it belongs.
One's a part of.
Yeah.
After they get the check.
Motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yep.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Old habits.
Approval of hire full-time police officer.
That's the name, and that's the wage.
Jenna Brooks, seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents. Per hour. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yep.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
This is our first female police officer for South Jacksonville. Approval of hire firefighters. Motion?
I gotta get the names.
David Johnson, Christian?
Ginder.
Ginder.
Ask them if they wanna do that individually together.
Individ, individually or together?
Together. Together.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Approval of hire, street and water department. Waters, sewer, lab, labor. Christopher Cooley, fourteen dollars per hour. Motion?
Yes, motion, okay, yes.
Speak up!
Yes. So, I don't know.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Approval of hire, code enforcement, building slash ordinance. Part-time, fill black, fifteen dollars per hour. Motion?
So moved? So moved?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Approval of hire, code enforcement, building slash ordinance. Code enforcement officer, part-time, Bree Smith, fifteen dollars per hour. Motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Motion to approve tourism grant application, Bass tournament. For one thousand dollars. Not all at the same time.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
John Gottschall?
Yes.
Paula Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Chris Norton?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Any old business? Any nu- new business?
Hold on, just a second. Can we give our guys a hand here? I'm sure they're all probably sweating a little bit, just so you guys know, it is easier sitting back here than it is up there, so.
Sherman, do you have any new business?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.